Okay, just a few minutes before ten o'clock on October twenty eighth. We've got this meeting to order. Roll call, Smiley.
Eric.
And.
Eric.
Murphy here. Number four, approval of payroll warrants claims.
I'm moving to approve those.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number five, approval of minutes of the last meeting on October twenty first, two thousand and nineteen. Any additions or corrections?
I'm moving to approve.
You see some.
Oh.
Sorry about that.
I wondered where they, where I didn't sit down.
Sorry about that.
You good?
Yeah, very good. I'm moving to approve those. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, discussion of possible action regarding transfer of appropriations from Highway District, number three, maintenance and operation, to capital outlaying an amount of forty thousand.
That's a motion.
Okay. I'll second.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, discussion of possible action regarding land and right-of-way acquisition services agreement between Pinnacle Consulting Management Group Incorporated and Woods County Job Project, number three one seven seven six, and Board Green Leaf Creek Project.
That would be the bridge north of Green Leaf Fire Station District. I'm moving to approve that. I'll second this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You sound both places, David.
Yeah.
Number eight, discussion of possible action regarding resolution approving the twenty twenty interlocal cooperative agreement between CDA and the county. Is this for the bridge inspections?
No, this is just.
Just, just.
Engine.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion of possible action regarding resolution designating official foreman to CDA.
I think you keep that seat for one, if you want it.
We want a list on there, first and second alternate.
Yeah, there really should be places.
You want to do that, guys?
I don't know.
John, I think, is the first alternate. David's second. There are some counties that don't have that third one on there, but I think whoever's available ought to be able to be there to represent.
And who made that?
One county.
Do what?
Who made the last motion? How'd that mess out?
I made that motion. Randy's second.
Okay.
Number eight, David's made his second one.
Thank you.
For the ninth.
And you seconded.
Yeah.
Come find out.
Catch up here, huh?
Okay, number ten, discussion of possible action regarding county providing rock and theme for hauling the rock for the event center, discussion with Aaron Slater, Alva Reena, and the authority represented. So you're up, Mr. Slater.
I'm up. What I brought, and I don't know how the best place to get everybody around is to see it, but I'm gonna pass it, pass these things. Oh, coming at you. And I'm gonna just show you kind of some conceptual things in the beginning, but these are, if you look to the front, is kind of some conceptual drawings of what the new complex will look like. And so, kind of the main front entrance that would have a designated or identifiable entrance to it, and then that's just kind of some rendering. And then inside, and those pictures are in front of, I'm gonna pass these around as soon as I can get them. That's, that's what, what I brought here to you. What we're looking for is the county provide for the aggregate for the project, and so that would be the rock and the hauling and delivery of that to the, to the job site. So roughly about forty thousand tons of rock is kind of the, of an estimate. And if you look at the drawings, you know, that sets on forty acres out there is what the facility.
This, this is forty acres right here that we're looking at?
Yes, yeah, that's exactly right. And so we're looking at the aggregate in the parking lot, the only.
Here, here?
Yep.
And here?
Here, 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 and here. This will be the only asphalt area parking, will be this main.
Do you have a number for the square footage of your asphalt instead of forty acres?
None of the, this is the only asphalt section here. The rest of it will be all gravel.
Okay, do you have a number of what, what's gonna be gravel, how many yards, or I mean, how many square yards or feet or other than forty acres, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, I can get you that, John. I, I don't know off the top of my head, other than that we're looking at about forty thousand tons of aggregate when they figured all the spaces that must need to be rocked was what that is. So take out the, the building itself, you know, the, the parking lot, the backside.
And the asphalt and your concrete.
The asphalt, you know, the asphalt's not in what we're looking for the county to do.
And that's not in the concrete?
No.
That's not supplying the aggregate for the concrete?
No, sir.
It's just, just buy, buy eight's rock for the parking lot?
Yes.
What about your, your drainage spots where you're gonna have riprap and stuff like that? Is that?
Yes, that, that's, that's the aggregate needed to rock the areas that isn't, doesn't have a building on it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, parking lot.
Yeah, everything except the building.
Did your engineers come up with this five eighths rock for?
Yes, they, they, they looked at aggregate that.
And they're, they're just saying that it's okay to put that five eighths on virgin, let's just call it virgin ground, and that's gonna, that's gonna be good enough parking lot. There, there's nothing bigger than five eighths in there, and that's gonna make them a good parking lot.
As I understand it, they'll compact that surface to.
Oh, yeah.
Compaction standards and then put that ser, that, that rock down. They've looked at some other places that's, that's been put down and had thought it would, it would work, meet, meet the specs that they're needing.
Have they looked at maybe stabilizing on there, or fly ash, or cement or something before you put down?
That, that's, that's what I'm generally.
There's lots of ways of doing this, and.
The rock disappears over time if you don't.
Well, what they told me is that they would, they were gonna bring the, the soil to compaction before that was on.
Yeah, but they, they can get it to compaction range, but they still won't have something underneath.
They soil cemented it though?
Yeah, they're gonna bring the, the soil and dirt to the standard to, to hold the rock, but that, that's not the part we're asking.
Yeah, I know, but.
There's been a separate dirt contract, you know, proposed in this, and that, that's where.
You got a general contractor hired and with an engineer and?
Yes, construction management firm is Timberlake Construction. And so, you know, they've done core samples and engineering and civil out there to get the specs and the dirt, and everything that it will compact to handle the, the aggregate that's gonna be putting on top of it.
And that's, that's gonna meet all our?
Meet all of them.
This that you're asking us to do, is that our part of our fifty percent ownership? To get you guys started, is Alva, they got the other fifty percent ownership, are they gonna, are they gonna?
Can't answer that, John. I, I don't know, but what we're asking for the, the county to do is if they provide the, because the rock piece was a part of the, one of the bid packages, one of the costs inside the proposal, if that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
So what we're looking to do, if the county can provide that, it's, it's a savings to the project, which will help make the project come, you know, closer into the point where we can, we can afford to get permanent financing on it and, and get going on it. So, because if, if, if the county doesn't, it's not, I say doesn't, not able to provide this, basically that's gonna go back into one of the packages that we're gonna put out for bid, somebody else is gonna bid on it to perform that scope of work. So if, if the county is, is able to do this, you know, through things, it, it could be a local contractor, get that bid, I, I don't know that, but by the county doing it for sure, those, those resources will be able to be spent here locally. That, those revenues will be spent right here in Woods County versus if a firm that would bid on it would be out of Wichita or Oklahoma City, basically we're gonna take those monies and they'll go outside the county. So, and that'll be just another expense that we'll have to find the money to pay for.
How many, well, does this, does this have any bearing on our maintenance agreement that you're, you're, so you're wanting this on top of our maintenance agreement?
Yes.
We really don't have a maintenance agreement. No, we don't, but we, that's all that we've discussed, that's all I knew about until this got, bam. Is there gonna be more of these? You know, I was prepared for the maintenance agreement, that's what we discussed, but I wasn't prepared for this shot. I mean, that's, that's my only question, that's why I question if we're fifty percent owners, is another fifty percent owners, because you can't answer that.
We're not fifty percent owners until the arena authority decides that it's done. Is that correct?
Basically, the county and the city are fifty percent.
Beneficiaries.
Beneficiaries, that's probably, that's the point. So if, if the Alva Reena Authority would ever dissolve, the county and the city would have.
We're gonna have to take care of it or whatever.
You'd have, it would go back to you guys.
That's why we're putting some money into it, I understand that, but I don't understand if we're the only ones putting money into it.
Yeah, in, in the city.
Who would I need to ask that, the city? I mean, it's all good, it's just I.
Well, regardless, whether we put the money into it or not, up until, unless our guess should happen, we're still not, there's no co-ownership.
No.
If it's still a building.
But basically, there's, the city and the county don't own the project. They're, they're just the beneficiary of it.
Even when it's done?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, until you're ready to say you can have it back, that's.
Yeah.
I'm just, that's my point, I am. Well, this scenario, what I like is the, the county, what I like about it is allowing the county trucks to haul it, and that, that deal, being able to stay in the county and be spent back here through where there'd be canings.
Fuel taxes.
Yeah. I mean, the money is staying, I guess, local, if, I mean, that's a tip, this is a tip. The only local money, you know, Martin Marietta, they're getting paid for the rock, we haul the rock, there's no, where's the, where's the economic growth if, if Martin Marietta gets the money and we pay for it?
It just depends on how you handle the rock.
Where's that money?
The rock hauling. Handles, it depends on how the, how the county can choose to move the aggregate from Martin Marietta to the fairgrounds. If, if you contract out to local haulers to haul that aggregate from there, you're gonna be paying them that trucking freight on that, so that's where, that's where the cost is. Because that's a bit the big cost of it, the rocks probably, you know, I must be simple here, probably fifty percent in aggregate, fifty percent in the hauling, and so you're gonna put, you know, those dollars are gonna go back to, to local.
It depends on what's there, January one, down there in that yard, they're paying ad valorem, which the schools are getting on their inventory, which is, you know, is positive there. Yes, if the county buys the rock, it'll be tax exempt, but the hauling, the guys, the hauling.
If we keep the haul local, they'll buy local fuel, local tires, local mechanic shop, local drivers hired to haul the truck, or.
Groceries we haul, you know, just the chain, that chain of that. The, the courthouse and the, and the schools are gonna, the ones off the ad valorem, which is, is, depends on what's in their inventory at Martin Marietta day, Mark, January one. What if we say, yeah, let's do this, and Martin Marietta closes, what do we do then? We rescind it and start over? Or, I mean, is there, do you have a timeframe?
No, no, John.
Can you give us a schedule when you're needing this, this, and this?
Basically, we're the projects right now, and you're looking at completed construction documents, they have, we've sent out the individual bid packages, so from electrical to civil to dirt, and got back bids on, on those scopes of work. And so we've got a, a couple different phases, there's a phase one, and then there's a couple of add-ons to that, and so where we're at right now is, since we've had some substantial donations, because right now, as far as completing the project, we're looking at using, at the current point, private money to do that, and so we're trying to figure out how many things that we can get done to, to help bring the number into a place that we can afford to get started. And so that, that's where we're at right now, is we're trying to take the number it's gonna cost to build it, take the money we have pledged to construct it, and put that forward to see if we can.
So if we pledge to do this right now, then we, we don't actually ever move a dime until, and if it comes out that it doesn't happen for some reason, then our obligation's fulfilled and.
What, what we're looking at is the aggregate cost inside, when they put the bid, the scope of work together and looked at what, what the aggregate cost to move that, buy that, to make that piece happen, was around a million two. And so when we start looking at the bottom line on what we're gonna have to have money to cover, either we're gonna have a million two in there to cover the rock cost, or we're gonna be able to say that the county is gonna pledge to take care of that expense, and so.
And that million two's allowed to be added to this.
Yeah, we're not, we're not looking at cash, we're looking at money that we're gonna be.
Exactly.
Responsible for spending, we put that, that scope of work out, we're gonna have to find the money to cover that.
And until, until ground is broken, we're not, we're not actually physically obligated to haul the rock.
We just need to know for us that whenever we're, we're looking at putting finance in, what we can, what we're gonna do is, is that a million two?
That's already in place.
Above the line or below the line.
So if we agree to this, can we get a guarantee you're not gonna ask for another one way, whatever it is down the road? I mean, can, can we, can we have a, a starting spot and a stopping spot? Because this is news, I don't like, I don't like surprises. This is a surprise, you should call me or let me know, somebody should.
You know, I, I don't foresee anything else, John, but my crystal ball is only as clear as it is today, I, you know, I can't.
And I don't have a crystal ball, I just get this, there you go, we need that.
I don't think, I don't, I mean, I think, I guess it could be changed. If we did do something like that down the road, ten years, if this thing's really working and we're not sitting in this chair, that's not fair to the next round, that ties our hands where they can't help.
Yeah, we're, we're shooting at stuff that hasn't even started yet. I might get killed on the way home. We might all die, I mean, but yet we got a resolution in place for the next guy or?
What I'm saying is if, if we, if we put in here that that's it, we're not giving no more money, and this thing starts working way good, ten years down the road, and they need a little more help.
They can always come and ask.
Well, no, because we're gonna put in here that we can't help them.
But we can change what we put. Can we, can we make a resolution, say we're not gonna do anymore, and then down the road they say, well, we don't have to do anymore, period? We don't, but we've got the opportunity to say, we can rescind there and say we need to put some more money in. Here's what I'm gonna tell you, here's what I'm gonna tell you about that. We aren't obligating any more than this with this deal. Down the road, you just make that call, whether, if they come and ask for more, you make that call, yes or no then?
If they come for more, we don't have to.
Rather than try to.
Basically, just like the call we're fixing to make, yes or no now? I mean, they, it's not gonna stop the project if we don't, I just wanna know, I, I want information, I can't make blind calls like that. I mean, I, I got elected to, to take care of this, and if I'm not, if I'm left in the dark, then it's pretty hard to see the light. I mean, that's, that's how I look at it, but I, I want, I want this to happen, I want, I want, I wanna make it work, but I don't wanna have to keep, keep getting that stuck at me. Are you, are, are you, I mean, the information that we're getting today, I'd like some better numbers, how much we're covering?
Not forty thousand yards, I wanna know square yards, what we're covering, what parking lot, what, what we actually. And, and I'd like to talk to that engineer, because like Donnie said, I've done this stuff for a living, and I've seen compacted hard ground, put, puts the wrong thing on there, some water, it's a weight, and bam, you're, you're sunk in that deep. There's, there's other options, I'm sure they weigh them, but there's cheaper ways of doing things, that soil cement, and you can put a little bit of that and not have to do all this, that's why the oil field does it. But I want the best product we can get for what we, I want it to last, I want it to be able to, I don't wanna have to keep going out there taking care of this.
I think that's what everybody wants, John, and that's, that's why we, you know, it's not just men, but, you know, we've solicited the people that's, that's what they do for a living, as far as the engineers and the firms that, that do this on a daily basis and that, and that's, that's what we, that's where this information comes from, it wasn't just dreamed up or thought up, and it might work, that's what we, that's what we gathered.
Well, I, I have no problem with you talking to them, I mean, do you dare?
No.
I mean. I just would like to ask some questions, I, I don't wanna demand anything, I just want some answers. I'm a part of this, I'd like to be a part of it, that's all, you know, you're asking me to take a big old step for my people, and I'm the one that's gotta answer to this, for this answer, you know, I mean, that's how I look at it. I think that's reasonable. This was just brought here because of their recommendation. What do you want to do, David?
I'm, I'm good, I mean, I, I understand what's going on here, and I, I understand that you brought up, you know, the areas, I completely go with that, but I'm, I'm like, I mean, I'm for the deal to, I think, I don't, it's hard for me to.
I just like that I just want it to be right, I don't want it to come back on some people that say, well, we failed there, I don't wanna, it's gonna be tough enough as it is. I'm all about, you know, whatever, you need to have questions answered about their, what they're calling. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna hold them up, it's been long enough, I'd like to, to move along as fast as possible, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna throw a wrinkle in there. Well, here's what I'm gonna say, I think you've said enough to find out, I don't think anybody has any objections to doing it right, and you being comfortable with it, and, and knowing that they've got our support is the main thing without.
Yeah, that's my support.
Without.
I want you to.
Without anything, I mean, as long as they know they've got our support, they can, they can go ahead and, you know, whatever we decide is the right way to proceed, if, if you need that in a, in a resolution form with, you know, or whatever, I mean, without an obligation to, a dollar obligation.
It's, what we're looking for is, is like I was talking about, that, that scope of work is roughly to do the aggregate section of this project is a million two, you know, that's the, the aggregates.
And that's bigger than rock and trucking, right?
Yes, yeah, and so what we're wanting to know is if the county is willing to take care of that, or is that something that we need to put in and, and put out to, to pay a deep, or put out to bid, so that will be in the scope of work that we're gonna have to find financing for.
I would like you to, to exhaust all of your options on that before you, I mean, like, but looking at different soil cement and.
And those planes, they're a typical section of the parking lot, they can see that chose eight inch stabilized dirt and then six or eight inches of ag base.
Well, here's my suggestion on this deal, that John talked to the Timberlake people, they're the ones that put the, the one point two million dollars in place, okay? And if there's a better, a cheaper way, then.
No, I, oh, yeah.
I think, I think that, that is the, the figure, John, I mean, you know, that, I'm not even gonna say we need to obligate that, but to know they've got the support for that, if it's cheaper, then so be it, if it costs more to do it the right way, I mean, I'm, I'm aiming for that also.
And, and I want you to know that, you know, that number just wasn't pulled out of the air, I mean, it, it was looking at value engineering and trying to find the most economical, feasible way to accomplish, I mean, because, you know, ideally, in a perfect world, you could put asphalt or cement down, but that wasn't.
How much was that gonna cost you?
I can't, it wasn't even.
Either one?
Yeah, I, more than that, more than where you said.
Oh, yeah.
So we just can't afford that, and so we looked at backing up, and we looked at that throughout the whole project, what, what way can we value engineer to get, you know, a facility that can be beneficial to the county and be attractive to this region? And so that's, I, I don't want you to think that that's, that surface was just arbitrarily come up with, I mean, it was, you know, trying to find the most economical, cost-effective approach to meet the need of, of having a parking lot that was all weather, and then also met the need of having livestock and all age people walk on it and all those types of things, so that's, that's where that come from. But what I will do is I'll reach out to the construction management firm, which is Timberlake, and have them touch base with you.
I want your phone number, too.
Can I get a good, yeah, we'll share.
Okay. Don't say it on camera that way to people.
I guess, I don't know, do y'all need it in a resolution form or we just, are you comfortable with us tabling? I mean, I think the support is.
I support you, I'll support the parking lot.
You know, I mean, is that, is that suitable with you guys?
Yeah.
To go the, the support of the parking lot and?
Yeah, I'll support aggregate here, make sure you've got an all-weather parking lot.
Okay. All right.
If you've got surprises, get on that phone, so I ain't surprised. I got you here.
Yep, any questions?
Like in this corner over here, these are the offices?
Yep, that is offices for, proposal offices for the fairgrounds and the facility itself, the county extension office and the election board.
And then these are like, I'm just gonna call them like a John purchase building?
Yes, those are three, they'll all, they'll also be divided.
Closed off, right.
They'd be wide open or they can be divided, so you can have that entire space, which is gonna be roughly ten thousand square feet, or you can have it three separate.
That's all. And then this is a full cell kitchen.
Yeah, it's a kitchen that can cater and serve out of.
And that's the logistical places to have.
Kitchen service to serve.
Right, but the full.
I mean, that's the.
We didn't have many counters. Right there, see that corner right there?
Right there, okay.
And then our bathrooms over there on that far side.
Oh, really?
Like bathrooms and then also you can see where they could, dressing area there.
Essentially, we pay for both places, so we pay what we pay after.
Will this be an arena, shoulder lane?
That's a large, just draw them pins in there, so that space there is about.
We just did, we just did.
So you can set pins up in there.
Just a resolution to spring, use your words for a motion.
There'll be pins to find it, yeah, there'll be, there'll be a briefer pins. So, so there's.
Well, they, they don't know their finding house and that, I don't know if this is a, is a huge prize, it's just the place they're at because of the finding house. There's still no date, they don't have any dates.
You could stall them anymore, you could stall here and then.
Well, there, I don't know.
How many of them surprises can you show? If this can be fresh from back here?
Well, I don't know if we can, this one is.
All by ourselves?
Yeah.
No, they, they.
I don't see that housing.
We've been bitten just as much as anyone.
I don't see the financial means of that happening, I don't know.
I don't think some of these are gonna get revenue.
They aren't, but here's the thing about it, we're gonna create some revenue with this thing to come back to us and there's very few, there's very few opportunities that I see that we do that to create that, but, but it, it has absolutely no bearing about how to do it right. That's what I want, you know, that's just all we're going by is the target deal and I just see the positives in, in this happening this way for us to get a return on, on the taxpayer money we already have to create some more. If the facility happens, I see a lot more, I mean, well, if it's, yeah, if it's successful, there's gonna have to be, I don't know, has we got enough motels? I don't think we do to support the, the big events that this facility's gonna be able to cater to. I know we don't have enough restaurants, I, I mean, you know, and every time, and that's a job creation deal, both of those situations, and that just causes a chain. And here's the thing, I've thought about this lot, the, the deal, that the whole thing about going to those big events, which we've gone into a lot, is that the off time, I mean, the people that come here to this deal, if they're here for a week, like my kids and family go spend time, that going somewhere in that off time, like to the sand dunes, to the, to the cliffs at Freedom, to the, I know the caves are in Woodward County, but those are some things that have to be promoted, the tourism deal, I mean, I'm just talking about the, in their off time at an event that's going on for a week here at a time, something else for those people to do.
They spend a lot of money.
Right. I mean, somebody that's never seen the sand dunes before.
I remember several years ago when we had the big jackpot, used to have the big jackpot. Jim Lauter runs the number for pizza, how much money, I don't recall what it was, but it's a substantial amount of money that was run throughout during that weekend. Well, I know at one time I was told the car leader always sold at least a couple of vehicles during that weekend, people that come through, come to, you start adding that, that adds up pretty fast.
That's the thing that's so hard to look at and predict, I mean, for me anyway.
Well, what we did, was that?
I think so, and then you, I can get in touch and we'll get together.
Thank you for coming.
No, no.
Sounds good.
Typical section of that parking lot, probably is all again with rubber.
I bet it is.
Maybe it's typically shows the amount of ag base, amount of stabilized, probably in there.
Well, those are, they're figures, I don't know, but it's six inches thick.
That, that, that scope of work will be in there, Donnie, we can look at it.
That's probably all we need, typical section, maybe parking lot, bed zone.
All right, you got our support with the resolution, John's gonna look into it.
It'll be a free mission to take to me.
The date deal is a big issue, but anyway, maybe this will be a step further to dividing it. Well, I mean, that, this is just a supportive, a financial support.
And that's the thing, it's just need to know where, get exactly what you guys get that's working.
Sounds good.
Darren, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean, you for some. You guys look through them, take them, bring them back to where you sound.
I'm here, all right, I'll leave them here, I will study that. That might answer my question right there. Don't mention them all, but it'll answer a lot.
That's what I was wondering, I knew I'd sign one. Okay. Number eleven, discussion possible action regarding opening the seal bids for twenty-five by fifty building, nineteen twenty oh six for district three. I think those bids are open.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, we're just.
Accepting or?
No, I'll look at it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick, what we do, do the building first, I'm gonna pick FM Erickson. He's not the cheapest, he's not the highest, he's right in the middle, but he's done work for me in the past and his quality's been there and that's why I chose him.
All second. Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. I started to, but he did.
Probably about to play it. It's all downhill from here.
You've been out of school twenty years? Oh, crap.
How much is the paper now?
I didn't picture it that old.
Wonder is it out?
Twenty, I've only been out about twenty-five.
Good except.
Forty-five?
Okay, number eleven, discussion possible action regarding accepting the seal bids for twenty-five fifty building bids. Oh, I did that.
Number twelve.
Seal bids for electric for the twenty-five by fifty bid and number nineteen twenty oh seven for district three. I'm hiding all my marks.
I'm gonna go with Northwest Electric on that.
Okay.
All second.
All favor?
Aye.
Try to get it right this time. Number thirteen, discussion possible action regarding accepting the seal bids for their conditioning and heating for twenty-five by fifty building bid, number nineteen twenty oh eight for district three.
Brandon's. Did I somewhere live on that competition?
Yeah, Brandon, yeah.
What's the company name?
Brandon's Financial.
I'll second that. All favor?
Aye.
Do we need to put those amounts in on that?
On the minutes, I will put it in the minutes, yes.
I mean, we went over it last week, this is the, except. Number fourteen, discussion possible action regarding inventory resolution to remove cat grader from inventory for district three ID number D three oh seven one six five surplus and sold to one cat. Wait, I thought you sold that to bid it.
No, I sold the loader to bid it. I sold the cat grader back.
Oh, the grader, I'm sorry, okay, I apologize. Okay.
It's next.
You made a note, okay. I'll second it. All favor?
Oh, he said.
Okay, all right, all favor?
Aye.
Let's get my mind's messed up.
I know, I know, can't put the stuff up the box.
Number fifteen, discussion possible action regarding inventory resolution to remove cat loader from inventory for the three ID number three one two three nine sold to bid it.
That's the nine sixty-six that I sold to bid it.
That a motion?
Yeah.
That's a motion, all favor?
Aye.
Number sixteen, discussion possible action regarding inventory resolution to remove a Dell and HP computer for the Clark ID number F two fifty dash thirteen and F two fifty dash twenty surplus and jump.
I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, I'll make one of those.
All second. Favor?
I thought that one.
Yeah. He made the motion, I second. Number seventeen, discussion possible action regarding August two thousand nineteen detention transportation claim in the amount of a hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-eight cents. That's a claim already, right?
Yeah, they're gonna get reimbursed.
Kids, the honoring kids, right?
Right. But this, for when it happened, we get reimbursed.
I'll make that much. We need to even have two bags.
Yeah, I'll second. All favor?
Aye. Well, some of them got bigger problems, I think. Remember, remember, different places are a little higher because they have a little special needs or something like that?
Well, this is just for transport.
Isn't there any discussion?
Maybe it was farther away?
Discussion possible action regarding the September two thousand nineteen detention transportation claim in the amount of seven fourteen, seven hundred fourteen dollars.
So moved.
All second.
Was that another one off the transportation?
Yeah.
Okay.
One must be in, one must be in the slogan.
Well, I know that person, I looked, it was the Garfield County.
Yes, and then these, I'm not sure. That one's where it feels within this one, Texas County.
Yeah, that's a long way off, but there's two trips to each, it's part of the deal.
Take them out and then go get them or something maybe?
Well, the Garfield County happened, went, took them and went and got them the same day, both of them, Texas County, went one day and went back the next, got them. Everybody was in favor, right? Looks like pretty standard procedure, a charge going and coming, even though they did the same thing, charge sent them out for each one, even though they're not in the same vehicle. Okay, nineteen, discussion possible action regarding the memorandum agreement by between Blue Sky Media and West County Emergency Management, and this amounts to putting up a repeater tower out here on, on a deal east of Alamo.
Blue Sky Media Agreement is actually, Blue Sky Media is a radio station out there west of Cleveland, they operate, they've got the train under on the tower, on the five hundred, and although they don't own the tower, where the.
They're rights?
They, they are the ones that have electricity service running to the building, so this area would be twenty-five dollars a month, we would pay them that amount for the use of just a minimum of electricity, save us from having to even put in meter fees.
And that gets us up there in the sky.
Yeah, it'll let us, we're at.
That'll approve your.
Three sixty-ish, I think it went the.
That's essentially the next agenda item, it's a tower deal. This is just an electric charge.
Okay, a sole move.
Yeah, I mean, that, that radio station has the meter and already has equipment in there and we're just gonna pay our portion of the electricity. So.
Aye.
I agree, favor?
Aye.
The next, the next agenda item is, is on that, discussion possible action regarding memorandum agreement by between O N E Media Incorporated and West County Emergency Management, and this is for the actual use of the tower.
That's who actually owns it?
They own the tower and we end up up there.
Would it be any rent to them or?
Yeah, that would be a hundred dollars a month for repeaters, and that would be current moving the east tower and district one would be a hundred repeater, so it would be two hundred dollars a month, we could pay it on time for a festival year.
Yeah.
I'll do it.
All second. All favor?
That would help you, where's your repeater at?
Yeah, I don't have.
Oh, you don't have one?
That should be plum south Winona, right?
It'll, the cover going up.
You'll get it maybe straight south.
You'll get it, I mean.
Chatschatri or further east, probably down here.
Oh, yeah, bear be. Very east.
I don't know. You shouldn't have covers. That's I've got are only with ten of them because that's the limit.
And a lot to put or set.
I mean, it'll well cover.
If we did that one down south, we should be...
Completely covered.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I don't know what the elevation is out there, but I can talk to my guys from Carrier or Chisholm on my repeater. Well, it's also at some of the highest elevations. And I say, I mean, but I don't know what the difference out there.
I can imagine Gary. Eight, up to eighty, ninety miles.
Yes. And then when they get theirs up, because they're going to have to pull yours down as they do the new tower build, when we get to South One, years to back up, it's going to be higher than it is pushing right now.
Yes. Which I really, I don't have any trouble communicating anywhere on my stuff. I don't have any dead spots.
Yeah.
I would if I didn't have a fair, I can handle.
That's kind of close, I'd say.
Yeah. Do we need a motion on that, too?
I thought we did.
You did. You have the...
Number 21, discussion possible action regarding the emergency management performance grant quarterly report. This is just the updated quarterly report. Our report boy is sticking one down.
I'll move it. Say what that is? Yep.
All second. All favor?
Aye.
This one please.
Can you give me a copy? Thank you.
Number 22, discussion possible action regarding changes to requisitioning and receiving officer from the health department. Uh, requisitioning Patty Steelman and Todd. Who are?
Y'all have all, I don't even know.
And receiving Dawn Mercury and Allison Arena.
All move, we accept those?
Two pages.
Are them people that just changed jobs or something?
Yeah, they switched some department people around. All gets new people came in and they're... This Todd's a new guy.
Uh-huh. These are health department people.
Aye. Any new business?
It's no... When you can get... I hope that's all business, so.
Number 24, approved, disapproved blanket purchase order.
Better approve them. So I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All favor? Aye. Number 25, get motion to adjourn.
I need to box.
Is that a adjournment?
We'll get it.
Is that an adjournment?
That, yeah. We'll get it. Yeah. I'll second that one. Spill her out.